Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. March 3rd, 2021, at 7:30. Could all stand for a pledge of allegiance to our flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Everybody, it looks like we have Ralph, Jim, Mike Hernandez, Lou Pear. I'm not sure I see Mike Pelton or Rick Shar just yet.
I'll shoot a quick text.
But we do have a quorum, so we can start our meeting. The first item is the acceptance of agenda, and I just have a minor change under communications and correspondence. We have listed a proclamation to the Cub Scouts PAC 2, and I also want to call attention to a certificate we recently issued to Petzl Marine Center. So with the addition of Petzl Marine Center, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Lou. And I see Rick Shar has joined us. All in favor of acceptance of the agenda, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition?
I'm abstaining because I don't know what we're voting on, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're voting on the agenda, Rick.
Okay, I'm in favor of the agenda then.
Okay, alright, then we will count you as an aye, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. So at this point, the only person that may still arrive for the board is Mike Pelton. We'll keep an eye on that.
Am I late, or did the meeting start early?
No, we started right at 7:30.
Mike Pelton's here, popping up.
I have 7:32.
Hi, everybody.
There is.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Well, I'm sorry, I have 7:26, so.
7:32 I have.
Alright, I set my watch to your time.
Alright, we will continue. The next item is number four, approval of minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting of February 17, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 17, 2021.
I'll second it. Rick will second.
Thank you, Rick. Any changes, errors, or omissions?
I just want to point one thing out. When I gave an update on the park, the way the sentence runs and makes it look like I talked about, obviously I talked about the spring opening of the park, and then in the second sentence, they had problems with beaver damage and are looking at solution. That was with reference to the reservoir, so I don't want anyone thinking we have been dealing with beaver damage after the park.
So could you indicate the sentence to be remote?
Well, I just, it shouldn't be, they could leave. The report on the spring opening of the park, they had problems with beaver damage and are looking into a solution at the reservoir. If it just adds at the reservoir, it's gonna, that'll just call attention to where it meant.
Okay, with that one minor change, is there, that'll make the motion with that friendly amendment, with that change? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Next item, under communications and correspondence, I want to call your attention to four of our Cub Scouts that recently received the Arrow of Light Award. I did attend their celebration, thank you, Jim. Alex Brown, Calvin Solinsky, Jonah Hess, and Marcus Clements. And you should have all received a copy of that. Congratulations again to our Cub Scouts, their parents, and friends and relatives. And the other certificate of appreciation is to Petzl Marine Center. And Jim has a copy of that. Thank you, Jim. And it is because the Petzl Marine Center contributed a very generous donation for our new canine, Magnus. And we were able to say thank you to Bob Petzl and his family from the Petzl Marine Center on Monday, and we gave him the certificate of appreciation. Michelle, my assistant, has been putting these certificates on our website so that others can see the acknowledgement of the accomplishments in our town. So congratulations and thank you, in particular, to Bob Petzl and his contributions to public safety. The canine is really a remarkable addition to our police department, and he will be graduating soon and be certified as a police canine very soon. Sergeant Jim Kelly is the handler, this is, I believe, his second dog, and we are very, very proud of the accomplishments, and certainly proud of Jim and his contributions. The next item is public comment, and I'll turn to Nick to see if there's any public comment.
There's no public comment right now.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we have John Hall waving his hand.
Okay, we will acknowledge John. If anyone else is in the audience and wants to speak, if you could indicate in our chat, that's a big help to us. But John, go ahead. John Hall, did you want to have something to say?
Yes, thank you. I just want to speak briefly in support of the resolution that Andy Bauer is going to present regarding, excuse me, the NRG power plant across the river. It may seem like a strange thing for Portland to be expressing itself on a power plant across the river, but first of all, I want to say that a lot of this pollution will come to Portland. So Portland is very, very, this is very relevant to the quality of life in Portland. Also, we have a serious crisis we're facing with climate change. And, you know, I could go into that in great depth, I think you all understand that. But it seems that our regulatory apparatus and the policies of our permitting and contracting for power generation are not up to date with what we need in terms of our environmental policies and our energy policies are not up to meeting the climate challenge as they exist. So I think a statement by the town of Portland would be very relevant and meaningful. I would only add that I think the statement should also go to the governor and to the Deep Air Quality Bureau, and in support of the legislation that is before the Environment Committee, or maybe it's the Energy and Technology Committee. There's so many hearings going on right now, but any of these would be relevant, and to support the legislative adoption of the governor's climate goals. The governor has adopted climate goals that have been developed within deep after years of consideration and careful thought, and these have to be legislatively adopted. And I think Portland's statement would be an excellent statement in support of getting legislative structure and support to those climate goals. So that's all I need to say, thank you very much.
If you could, just for the record, John, state your street that you live on in Portland?
Yes, I'm sorry, I always forget to do that. I'm John Hall, I live at 555 Main Street in Portland.
Thank you, John. The next person who has his hands up is Ellen Guild. Ellen, did you want to speak?
Thank you, I certainly would. I just want to follow up on John Hall's comments. Looking forward to Andy Bauer actually putting some meat on the bones tonight on this NRG turbine siting permit issue. And I want to echo what John just said in terms of what I would expect you as representatives of all the citizens of Portland, an action that I want you to consider. And that would be a simple statement to Middletown's Common Council, supporting their findings and position. They have just concluded a lengthy hearing, which I participated in along with John and Andy and others from Portland. It turned out to be more than four hours, and we stayed on until after 10 o'clock at night. The nuts and bolts of the end of it were that Middletown's Town Common Council, speaking to the proponents for the new turbine permit, said pretty directly, "We're not interested in that. If you can bring us an alternative that is a passive solar energy storage capability, we'd love to work with you, but we're no longer interested in any fossil fuel energy generation, period." And then they spoke to Portland and to East Hampton as not having been considered in the past when decisions about the plant's operation had been made. And for the 70 years that we've been living out here on Middle Haddon Road, we can speak to it. The pollution is significant, it was, always has been, and still is. And so I would like you as Board of Selectmen to indicate to, again, the Common Council of Middletown that you support their position. And Andy will fill in the blanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. And as Ellen stated, he lives on Middle Haddon Road. Thank you. Is there anyone else? I don't see anyone else in the chat. And I don't see any other hands raised at this point. So we will continue. And I did forward to the selectmen the monthly budget report. Tom Robinson had another appointment tonight, he is not here. I did want to point out just a couple of items for this month. And that is, in terms of projected revenues, we are doing well. We still have 9.61% of the total, which is $34,946,255, to be collected. So I would say we are doing well with collections for property taxes to collect just 1.95%, so that is good news. The other item I want to point out is that we have had a fair amount of snow in February. And as you might know, we had to have our employees working overtime. So on page nine, you'll see, when you have a chance to look, we're about $20,000 over budget. The line item is budgeted at $50,000, and year-to-date expenditures for labor is $70,119 for overtime in snow removal. There are still dollars in the road materials account to equal about $32,558. I know that we will still be getting some road materials, that is salt, and there'll be more dollars allocated to that. But the snow removal account still has a little over 9.28% in the account. So that's an update on the snow removal. And another item that Tom wanted me to bring your attention to, and it's happened in the past, due to the bridge, we have quite a bit of private over duty that the police have been performing. And while we get revenue for that account, when you look at your expenditures, there is an exceedance of about 20% right now. So we budgeted $152,500 for private police duty that's reimbursed by the contractors. And to date, we have expended $184,080.12. So we expect that to climb more, because there is a fair amount of overtime in the spring, and in particular for the work being done on the bridge. So there may need to be, for accounting purposes, a special appropriation to that account, because the revenue is covered in the revenue side of the ledger, but we always balance that out as time goes on. So those are just a couple of the highlights I wanted to bring to your attention. And we'll continue to review these accounts as we go through the budget season, which is going to be, many meetings will be in the month of March and into April. So we can continue that discussion at that time. Are there any questions from the selectmen at this point?
Nope. I'll make sense.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is something that I sent to the selectmen, and it's actually part of our monthly budget report. And that is, we have a solution for some of the raised sidewalks. Many of our sidewalks develop, I'll call them lips, that occur, and they can be tripping hazards. And Bob Shea, along with, actually, I can remember Fred Nowes bringing this company to us, it's Precision Concrete Cutting. It's a company that does many, many municipalities sidewalk work. And they have come out and looked at an area of our town where we're going to be putting in some new sidewalks. You know, we've done some sidewalks on East Main Street, and we've done some sidewalks on Fairview Street. We're going to be doing the area between Cross Street and High Street on the south side, all new sidewalks as part of the continuation of the 1918 bond issuance. But in addition, the sidewalks on Homestead Avenue, some of the sidewalks on East Main Street, there are many needs to improve them. And what this company does is they come out and they shave the concrete, and then they smooth it so that as you're walking, there is not a trip hazard in many of these areas. I made available to the selectmen, and anyone who would like them, I can make them available as well. There are specific locations identified, and the cost of this is approximately $5,757.50. And I wanted to let the selectmen know that I am asking permission to use some of our contingency, not to exceed $6,500. It won't be that much, but I wanted to have enough in case there were some additional items that needed to be done. But I opened it up for some discussion, and hopefully your permission to spend that amount. I always come to you when we spend contingency, of which there is about $93,000 of the $100,000 originally budgeted in that account. So there is adequate funds, but I bring it to your attention because there may be some other items in the future on the contingency account. So I'll open it up for discussion with the selectmen.
Yeah, this is Jim. This is an item actually that had been brought, well, the last time we had a meeting of the sidewalk subcommittee. We were discussing a couple of items, right? We know we're going to target some additional work on Fairview itself, but in lieu of the funds to do full replacements, this is something we can't do with the other monies, because the other monies that were bonded only allow us to do replacements and not repair. So in order to attack some of this additional work and improve those sidewalks right now as they stand, we would have to go with a different funding source. So to me, this seems right in line with what we were kind of hoping to see. It definitely improves some additional sidewalks that we otherwise wouldn't be able to target, and it does, it obviously would authorize the monies to do that in a way that's not, you know, that's using the appropriate funds. So I think this is a good idea.
Yeah, I would support it as well. I think, you know, certainly I've been in a lot of those discussions with regards to the sidewalks, and, you know, long-term, the goal would certainly probably be looking at whether, long-term, whether we could replace these sidewalks. But for the time being, we have some tripping hazards that we can take care of for a reasonable amount of money until, you know, who knows when we'll have the funds to attack East Main for putting in brand-new sidewalks. So I don't think it's a crazy amount to just reduce the risk of someone getting hurt there.
So can I ask, how does this, maybe, Jim, maybe you know, do they just grind down the sidewalk where it's raised up?
Yeah, they would look at where you have misaligned sidewalks, and they would basically grind it and level things out so you don't have those raised edges. I think they target anything over, I want to say it's over a half an inch, and it can be used up to a couple inches of lift. I think they don't go more than that, because you get, you won't have enough sidewalk remaining, right? You get into a point where it's thin, but.
That's my question, yeah. Does it compromise the integrity of the sidewalk by grinding it down? And then will it end up deteriorating faster?
The process that they use, in my understanding and the discussions we had, is that no. That's why they don't grind it more than a couple of inches. What it'll do is it'll take all those numerous raised edges that they've identified and smooth those out for right now. And it at least gets it to a better place than we could otherwise get the sidewalks to.
So could I make the comment, didn't they say that they don't really grind it, they cut it? Is that what they said? Or is it the other way around, they don't cut it, they grind it? I thought that I read that they cut it and they don't. But I'm just trying to clarify.
I think it may be, you know, potato, potato, the process that they use. Effectively, they're shaving it down, whatever the process of grinding it, or however you want to term it. I would see it probably more of a, either a grinding or some sort of a shaving that they use, whatever they call it, you know, whatever the technical process is. Effectively, that's what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I thought they talked about maybe the grind, it could increase the risk of compromising the integrity. That's just the reason why I thought I saw it.
I have seen it done. There was a demonstration, they came to show us a few years ago. And the particular sidewalk that they showed, there was a, probably about a quarter of an inch of a lip to a half an inch. And they did grind it and shave it, and then they sort of shape it so that it smoothes over. And if you are interested, I would show you, it's on East Main Street, just across the street, pretty much diagonally from Town Hall. And the amount that they list here, it says total estimate amount for shaving or cutting. So it depends on the situation, and then how much of the material they can take care of. It's a cuttable sidewalk, trip hazard as identified. So I've seen them do it, and Ralph, there is somewhat of a smoothing out or shaving that they do. So you wouldn't, almost, it's almost imperceptible once it's done. And I know there were some areas of the sidewalk, they told me they would not touch, because it would not meet up with their standards and how they've done that. I know that Old Saybrook has used this successfully, and other places have as well. This is coming as a recommendation from Bob Shea.
When would they do this? I'm sorry, Lou.
They're looking to do this as soon as possible. They don't want to do it when there's a lot of pedestrians on the sidewalks. So they told us that that they will be coming out sooner than later to get this accomplished.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to this. I like the idea of the removal of tripping hazards within the sidewalks. And we talked about this, I think, when we walked, we walked Homestead and that East Main a while ago. And I think that's, you know, it seems like a good idea for a temporary fix. My question is, though, if in fact, you know, a sidewalk replacement pieces, I know that we always like to replace long stretches, but if we were to replace sections instead of shaving them off? In other words, if there's a 10-foot section or a 15-foot section, I'm thinking that $5,000 could probably do about 50 feet, maybe more. You know, depending on what it would cost per foot. I know that the range that we've been using is somewhere between $80 and $100. This would probably cost more than the 80, because it's pieces. You can't run a long stretch with the forms and with the concrete, and it's more work. I understand that. So if in fact, maybe, you know, go back to Bob and say, can we, would it be good to replace sections? And if the $5,000 could take care of the sections that we're going to shave, at least then those would be brand-new. When we got to the point where we were going to redo that sidewalk, at least those sections would be done already, and those would be smooth, and the trip hazard would be gone.
Well, I.
I'm not against the shaving, but I think that maybe that, we should look into the possibility of replacing sections.
Well, I do know that this project that's upcoming on Fairview Street will include the area that is, again, across the street from Town Hall, looking north. So if you go to the corner where the stop sign is, and you look north, the sidewalks between Fairview Street and going north towards Spring Street, there's probably, I'm going to guesstimate about 10 to 12 panels that do not qualify for this kind of project. Those will be replaced, Lou. That will be part of the project that will be complete removal. If we were to do the amount of work that this shaving-cutting would do, it would be, and they give it to us in the quote here, "The savings over the removal and replacement are about 80.47% savings." If we were to do the work that they're doing with replacement, it would be $23,727. So while it's not all of the sidewalk replaced, it is this getting rid of as many tripping hazards as this project type of work would allow. Remember, they're not going to do those areas that, as you say, should be replaced, and we will be replacing those panels that require it. But I will definitely convey to Bob what you're saying.
Yeah, but I can, you know, and I understand that the shaving could reduce the tripping problem, because that's important. We had something like that on Main Street that I thought that should have been addressed ago, and I thought that could be shaved until the connectivity grant was in place. So I think that the shaving is good. I understand what you're talking about, and I see what Bob is planning, so that's good. I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion to approve, no more than, or up to, I should say?
Sure.
$6,500 of contingency for this project.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to reserve, or to use $5,000 from the contingency fund.
I need more than $5,000, I need $6,500, up to, no more than.
No more than $6,500, is that it?
I think that that would cover it.
Alright, no more than $6,500 from the contingency fund to be used to shave uneven surfaces on sidewalks on East Main and on Homestead.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? I just want to double check. I'm looking at the quote, Lou, and I see Homestead mentioned, and I do see, I know that some of it will be done on East Main. I don't think there's any other street. Do you remember, Jim, if there were any other streets?
Nope, it looked to me like it was Homestead and East Main were the targets for this.
Okay. Right. Right. Was there a second to your motion, Lou? I'm sorry.
I seconded it.
Thanks.
Jim seconded it.
Further discussion?
February 22nd, we hosted our community forum. And I thought it went really well. The panelists were all wonderful. They did a great job answering some really hard questions. It was very informative. And they were very honest questions. And I think that the community really learned a lot from the information that was gathered at the forum. We have our next meeting next Tuesday, March 9th. And following that, we will be giving a report to the Board of Selectmen that contains the survey data and the forum and overall what our task force has done and the different information that we've received, the important things that we think we need going forward. And we actually have completed the goal that you guys had given us for the task force when the task force was formed. Because we have, we've done two positive activities to benefit the residents of Portland. And we've worked with all the partners that are laid out in our task force. And so I was just wondering if there was anything else you want to charge us with, any additional tasks? Or if you want to expand our scope of duties? We do have coming up, we will be putting out the resource pamphlet, the DEI scavenger hunt, and the Juneteenth, but as far as the actual goals that were listed, we have actually accomplished those.
Congratulations, April.
One thing I was going to mention, and you mentioned it at the end about the Juneteenth. Hopefully, we can gather outside, maybe at the River, on the Juneteenth.
Yeah. We talk about the charge for the committee. We could talk about whether we want to organize as a group, a training, or whether you want to do it independently. Many of you have already undergone and gone and attended trainings from the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities and perhaps some other trainings as well. But maybe we could set, in conjunction with the task force, a goal for us as a board to have and dedicate an hour of training in the near future on these topics at a, at a general meeting. So I'll bring that forward at a future meeting and we can talk about it at that time.
Can I have, could I have one more comment?
Yes.
I just, April, I just want to compliment you. You did a great job moderating that forum. So I just want to let you know.
Oh, thank you, Ralph.
I'll second that.
I'll, I'll, I'll second that. That was a third, I guess. Again, yeah, difficult questions, difficult topics, but I thought it went very smoothly. And I thought, I thought you did a good job. I thought the team did a good job. And I liked the way you distributed the questions between the different groups and between the different members. So everybody got a chance to participate on both ends. So, well done.
Thank you.
The next item, nine, is reentry committee, discussion of services and programs offered during COVID-19. And tonight I've invited Janet Nocheck to discuss with us updates from our public Portland library. Good evening, Janet.
Good evening. So thanks. Yeah, so we've been keeping pretty busy with our curbside services and helping out with the vaccine process, which has been quite rewarding to be talking to people who are very appreciative that our town is helping, you know, we're getting together to help people get vaccinated. And, you know, they've had such a hard time in many cases with the VAMS system. And it's just so many people trying to get on at once in the last couple of weeks especially. So, you know, it's taking up a little time, but it's been really rewarding. I think people are much appreciative and kudos to Susan for pushing and Mary Ponce for making sure that we, you know, went forward with that. So that's worked out well. But as far as opening the library, there's still some concerns. Russ Melmid mentioned today that we're doing better in the area, but we're still 10 times higher, I guess, in positivity than we were back in the summer when we were still closed. So we're still cautious. On the bright side, we, some of us have gotten our first dose of the vaccine. And we'll follow with more of the staff getting vaccinated and completing that process in the next, within the next month or so. So I'm thinking by sometime in April, we'll be feeling, you know, a lot better. We, we do want to start kind of opening the doors more. We've been letting some people in to use computers or copiers and things. And, you know, we've been trying to help people find their books, but of course, they want to come in and look, look around and be empowered to find their own materials, which is great. So we're hoping to kind of have a limited entry, some hours and some, you know, maybe have 12 people at the most coming in on top of staff and people working in the library. You know, it wouldn't be too many people crowding in. So if we do that and keep up with all of the precautions, the rules that we follow with the masks and the sanitizer and thanks to the governor, we have a lot of sanitizer, nice touchless stations. We've got a lot of good PPE, a lot of masks that if people don't have them, we can give them out to them. If anyone forgets one, we've got one, you know, so things like that. We're prepared in case of different eventualities. So I think what I am thinking is to sort of have, you know, in the next couple of weeks, have kind of a limited number of hours that we are open and see how that goes, make sure we've got our processes in place. Have to move some furniture around a little and have staff doing a few different things and see how that works and how the patrons are doing. And we'll still do our curbside, we call it the services where we bring the materials out to people. They call on the phone or go on the computer and ask for things, request items, and we deliver them. We're also trying to rev up a little on our homebound services. So if people cannot travel to the library, they can, we could deliver materials to them. So that's in the works as well. So basically, if we kind of have a limited soft opening or so for the next couple of weeks and kind of in April, we'd announce, you know, the, the exact schedule that will continue. We'll have, we, we would still not have meetings and programs, obviously in-person kind of groups still won't be happening. We're not sure when that will start. Nobody really is, from what I'm understanding. Nobody's doing that. Maybe in the summer, we'll have outdoor things, certainly. We've got some things like drum circles signed up for the summer. So, and different children's programs outdoors. But other than that, as far as the immediate thing, we'll, you know, it will be just basically short visits to come into the library. But we'd like to start that and we'll probably be in full swing in April. That's my thoughts. Any questions or?
I have a question, Janet. Did you ever think of, about, like, letting people in by appointment?
Oh, yeah.
In other words, they call and, you know, maybe, maybe you can have 10 at a time or whatever, you know, the number you're comfortable with. But they, they call ahead and you kind of control it that way.
Yeah, we do. We want to try that and see how that works. And we were thinking, you know, if we only have a few people in and somebody does walk up to the door, we could let them, you know, as long as they're under the limit that we've set, which I'm thinking is 12 people coming in.
I noticed the chiropractor on Main Street does it that way. You, you know, you used to be able to just walk in. Now you call ahead. Most of the time you can, you can get in within, within the half hour or something, but they know you're coming. And I even noticed that when I've gone skiing this winter in Vermont, where you make a reservation online the night before and you, you get there with your ticket and you kind of check in. And then if they're not that busy and other people just walk up that day, well, then they, they may or may not let them in. But there's a certain amount that if they've made a reservation, they can go in and, you know, they can go and use the lifts and go in the lodges under certain, they're very careful when you go in the lodge and scan you and all that. Yeah, very controlled environment, but it's, seems to be working. I mean, they're operating.
Yeah, that's the main thing, yeah. We're, we're not having the programs too. We, we've been opening at six o'clock so, you know, Monday and Tuesdays, Monday and Wednesdays. We stuck, we're open a little late Tuesday. But it would continue that way. You know, we can get in, you know, before six o'clock so that we think working people would have a chance to make an appointment or come in or something. But, you know, we're not staying later. I think that's just safer too. So we don't have as many staff on it.
Six o'clock is fine.
I think we'll continue. And the Saturdays, we'll probably just do the curbside for the time being. Let's see how we can work that out. The concern on Saturdays, by the way, we don't have maintenance staff in. So nobody really cleans the bathrooms and, you know, they've been open on Friday. So we're not sure. We'll see how many people are using the building before we open it up more on Saturday. My thought is.
Other comments from the selectmen?
I was just going to say, because I was able to say with Mary here, that, you know, nice work with the work you're doing to help facilitate the vaccine appointments. Dr. Britton, last night at the Board of Ed meeting, was talking about some of the statistics that he's been getting. And one of the ones that I was impressed with is that 18.7% of Portland, folks in Portland have received at least their first COVID shot. And the work that you guys are doing is obviously helping to facilitate that. So thank you.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Janet, are you looking for us to approve these changes? And if so, if you could state them so the selectmen would know as the reentry committee what we are approving? That would be, I think, helpful.
Okay, summary. Yeah, I think basically, limited hours will continue and no meetings and programs. What we are doing is opening the library to people to come in for a brief visit. They will be timed visits pretty much an appointment for using the computers and browsing. And then we would review this probably in May, I think, to see when we would open it up more if that is possible.
Is there a motion to approve the report from Janet in terms of the, I'd call it a very soft reopening of the library?
I'll approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second to my Rick. Further discussion or questions?
I just would ask Janet, then would you be able to report back to us, say, in April? And with how, you know, maybe in four weeks or something, how, you know, how this procedure is going? And then we can look at that also in context with the positivity rate in town and in the state. And see if we can, you know, maybe go a little further on opening. But in other words, let's, let's, let's talk about it again in maybe three or four weeks, if possible.
Yeah, sure. Okay, the beginning of April.
That sounds good. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Janet. We'll look forward to hearing more very soon.
Thanks.
The next item, 10, is a request for bid waiver for the school bus contract. And we have invited our superintendent of schools, Charles Britton. And I know some of the members of the Board of Education are on the call. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Britton. Welcome. Good to see you.
Hello, pleased to see you. Can, can we unmute? Or I don't know if she's able to. I see her hand is raised. Stephanie is with us. For those of you who haven't met, Stephanie is a finance director here. She's, she's helped me very closely with this. Nick, do you need to unmute and others?
Aye.
I'm not sure if any, if y'all met Stephanie, she's a finance director. She works very closely with me and Tom. And she's terrific in every way. So I'm happy for those of you who haven't met her to meet her. And hopefully we'll be able to do this in person soon enough.
Welcome, Stephanie. Good to see you.
Thank you. You too.
So let me, let me start, if I, if I may, with just a, you know, I want to give you a little overview of the sort of due diligence and, and work that Stephanie, Tom and I put into getting us to this point, right? We, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say we've, we've put in our, quite a few hours in, in, in terms of the, the amount of work, research, discussions that we've had. And I want to make sure you're, you're comfortable with the process that we used. And then I want to share with you the findings of that process. We've done our, I think, our due diligence. If you feel like we've missed any, any pieces in terms of our investigation, I would love to hear about those. Then I kind of want to share with you the findings that, that we've pulled together from the conversations and analysis, both quantitative and qualitative data and research that we've done. So it start, to begin this process, Tom and Stephanie conducted what I would call a fiscal analysis of the contract. And that involved pulling the bids that we received five years ago when we went out to bid for this contract in 2016. Some of you may be more aware of that than even I was, but there was, it was a process that involved changing from a, a more local vendor and then going out to bid and soliciting bids from, I would call, not national, but more statewide vendors. So Tom took a look at those, I guess, dated bids, five-year-old bids, and sort of compared them to where we are now. And I'll share the findings with that, of that with you momentarily. In addition, Stephanie did a really nice job. She reached out to an organization called CASBO, which is her business manager association, and put together for us a good look at what other towns are paying for their bus, you know, sort of comparison of, well, how much are we paying? How much are other towns paying? And, and of course, you know, as we know, towns in Connecticut are very different. You know, a, a more urban New Haven, Hartford-like bus route would be very different than, say, New Milford or, you know, a vaster community. So what Stephanie did is she took a look at towns that are similar geographically to Portland and kind of mapped out where we were in terms of those comparables. And again, I'll, I'll share with you some of those findings momentarily. I just kind of want to talk through some of the process with you that we used. While we were doing that, we, I asked our contact at M&amp;J to give me the five most recent contacts that, contracts, excuse me, that M&amp;J negotiated. So he was very kind. Certainly, I could get them anyway if I reached out to those districts and filed an FLOI request. But, you know, there, there's no reason to hide those. So I got our hands on five of the most recent contracts that M&amp;J negotiated with Old Saybrook and North Haven and some other towns. And I read them, you know, just wanted to read our contract pretty carefully and read those contracts just to get a sense of the language, make sure everything generally was matching up. While that was happening, I shared the M&amp;J contract that we're working on with, I'm, I'm not going to name them, but I can tell you with, with two individuals who are very intimately aware and are close with and having worked recently with M&amp;J. And I would consider our local experts in transportation in Portland. I asked them to just take a look at the contract and sort of give me some insider baseball if they saw anything in it that they felt like we would, would need to be aware of. And, and they were kind enough to do that without charging. It was more of a, you know, a friendly gesture. And I got their, their feedback and I thought it was very helpful. And then I shared the contract with our attorneys at Shipman &amp; Goodwin. Now, this is really important because Shipman &amp; Goodwin is a legal firm that represents lots, many, many, I would venture to say nearly most, Connecticut public school districts. They're widely known in our field. Some of you may have heard of the name Tom Mooney. And they're just, they're very well-regarded. They have two attorneys for their firm that deal exclusively with transportation contracts. So I asked these individuals and through our board attorney to take a look at the contract, take a look at the rates that were being charged, take a look at the language in the contract, make sure it matches any statutory changes that were, that the state experienced since 2016 to now. statutory changes that were, that the state experienced since 2016 to now. And, you know, give the, the contract a hot wash and give me and Stephanie feedback on, on the contract. And then, of course, while that was going on, Stephanie and I have had multiple, multiple conversations with a gentleman named John Hipshire, who's our, so Stephanie, maybe you know his title, but he's like the regional director for?
Yeah, for M&amp;J.
Yeah, he's, he's the guy at M&amp;J that, that negotiates this. So it was, it's been a pretty extensive process, both in terms of looking at our contract, getting feedback on our contract, comparing our contract with neighboring districts and comparable communities. So that's sort of the, the whole process we went through. Let me stop there before I share the findings of all of that sort of homework with you and see if everybody's comfortable with the process, or you have any, any questions about how Stephanie, Tom, and I sort of engaged this, this analysis, engaged this process of reviewing where we are.
Are there any questions from the selectmen at this point on the process? I see a lot of, no.
We're okay. Okay. It sounds very thorough, and I appreciate the hard work.
Yeah, it sounds very thorough. One quick question, Charles. Is John Hipshire with M&amp;J, or is he with the, the law firm?
John Hipshire's with the law firm. We worked pretty closely with Rebecca Santiago and Gwen Zatun at Shipman &amp; Goodwin.
John is with M&amp;J. John's with M&amp;J.
John's with M&amp;J. That's, that was my question. Okay, thanks. I, I know, I know him. Anyway, he's credible.
Yeah, he's a good, he's a good guy.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
We've had a lot of conversations and, you know, he, he strikes me as somebody who is personable and pretty, great integrity.
Yep. Yeah, that's good.
So some of the findings. Interestingly enough, when we looked at the, the next lowest bid from five years ago, the first year of that bid is still higher than the last year of this current five-year contract. That gives you a sense of how much higher the next lowest bid was five years ago, right? And that was something.
Can I say something, Charles? It's actually not at the end of this five-year. It's would be at the end of the next five-year. So 10 years out.
Sorry. Why don't you clarify that? It's, it's a big difference, Stephanie. You, you said that more articulately than I did. Why don't you explain that, please?
So looking at the next bid that came in, their first year is higher than what we, what the percentage that was, you know, shared with us is what it would be for the next five years, is still more than what we would be five years out from now. So 10 years from when it first was there, it's still higher than where we would be five years from now. And that was five years ago when they bid. So if, you know, I don't know where it is now.
So the second sort of fiscal piece of this, and I have to give Stephanie credit, she did a really nice data analysis and shared the numbers with me. I'm, I'm not gonna share those with you because, you know, if, if we do end up going out to bid because you're not comfortable with this and would like us to, and we don't want to tip our hands to any potential bidders. But where we are in Portland, it's, we are literally in the 50th percentile. Of the districts we looked at, actually, Portland, more like, you know, 51% are higher than what we pay, and 49% are lower. What, you know, so the reality is, is it's, it's not a sweetheart deal, you know, it's not the lowest of all, but it's not anywhere close to the highest. It is right in the middle of market conditions, dead center of where we would be. And when we look at that in terms of the percent increases that we have on the table, the percent increases that we have on the table over the next five years would keep us right there, you know, would keep us right in the middle of what similar towns to us are paying. And that's generally where we want to be, you know. What, what that signals to me is that if, likely if we were to go out to bid, there's a 50/50 chance that we would come in maybe slightly higher, maybe significantly higher, maybe slightly lower, but doubtful that it would be significantly lower. Stephanie, did I say that clearly, and does that match your analysis?
Yes.
So we believe that the, the rates we're being charged reflect market conditions and are fair, and that the percent increases that we've been presented would keep us in that range of what is, is generally market conditions and would be, I would consider fair. As far as the analysis from our independent folks who we know well and know M&amp;J well, you just kind of have to trust me that these are people who have real insider knowledge. They took a look at it. They know M&amp;J well. They said the contract reflects their working understanding of M&amp;J, and that it is their humble opinion that it is a fair contract. That also matches the very clear feedback that Stephanie and I got from the attorneys at Shipman &amp; Goodwin. We, we spent an hour with the attorneys at Shipman &amp; Goodwin. They went through the contract line by line. They looked at what we're being charged. They look at the language, looked at the language in the contract, and generally, they said, in no uncertain terms, "This is a good deal, Charles. This is a good contract." They did give us three or four pieces of language that they would like us to add to the contract, that involved some additional training for bus drivers, some new language about data privacy, some language about family education rights to privacy. All of this reflects statutory changes since 2016. But overall, the feedback that we, we received from Shipman &amp; Goodwin is that it's a good contract, it's fair, it's reasonable, and it's up to date with these additions with current statute and, and state legislation. So that, that's the, the, the sort of contract-based analysis we, we've done. And then I can tell you some, from sort of other points, you know, the things I would, I would bring you up to speed on is, over the past five years, I can say from everybody I've, I've spoken with, we have developed a good relationship with M&amp;J. They, they have done right by us. Nothing's ever perfect, you know, there are always difficulties in, in any working relationships. But I will say, anytime we've ever had a concern, whether that's a concern raised by a parent, administrator, a student, I have found that working with M&amp;J, they are responsive to it, and they've always been able to address the, the concerns fairly and, you know, take the appropriate supervisory disciplinary action in those rare instances when necessary to make the corrective measures. Their safety record has been outstanding. I have not seen any, had any issues with any safety related concerns, which is always the, the, right at the top of my mind. Are, are our students safely being delivered to schools consistently? I can say, yes, they, they have done that. They have well-maintained, well-serviced vehicles. They provide a good product. And last thing I would just point out is, I know this from my conversations with many area superintendents, Connecticut, and I think the nation, is, is definitely experiencing a shortage of substitute teachers this year, and we are also experiencing a pretty difficult year with bus drivers. There, there are not a lot of bus drivers out there. It is something that, you know, clearly is, is likely a reflection of COVID and people's comfort level driving during a pandemic. But I think that it also extends to, in normal times, it, it is not always so easy to, to fill buses with qualified, good drivers. And I can say that even throughout this pandemic, I have been impressed. M&amp;J has, has kept their fleet staffed, and, and we've been able to, of course, as you know, be fully reopened now for going on two months, and they've provided a good, safe product for us, and I'm pleased with that.
Thank you. I'll open it up for questions from the Board of Selectmen.
Susan, I'll, I'll speak. Mike Hernandez.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, I'd just like to tell the Board of Selectmen out there that I had a great conversation with Charles Britton the other day, and we've been ongoing communicating about this bus contract. So with that being said, I went out and did some of my own research, talked to other transportation companies, and, you know, I got their feedback on, on our predicament and what's going on. And each company that I talked to also said, "It's not a bad deal. It's not, it's not a home run deal, but it's not a bad deal." He goes, "If you're really comfortable with M&amp;J and you like the work that they've been doing, it probably wise to stick with them." And then also, Mr. Britton pointed out many, many things to me that I wasn't aware of, and it was very helpful. I'm really glad we got to talk and work this out. And, and I just want to say, I'm, I'm taking their word for it and their, what they did with their due diligence, and I'm gonna support them and say, "I think we should move forward with this contract." Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
I joined our conversation too.
Um, Mike, do you have the resolution in front of you, or?
I'm sorry, I do not have it in front of me. But I did, I, Susan, I did notice on the resolution, though, when I did look it over.
Right.
I think there was an error on there.
Okay, why don't, why don't I read it? And if, if you could listen, and then we'll make changes and have further discussion. So I'll read it. Whereas the present school bus contract will expire June 30, 2021, and whereas the Portland Board of Education and M&amp;J Bus Company of Old Sable, Connecticut, have had a successful partnership on providing transportation to the Portland students, and whereas M&amp;J has provided quality and professional service to the town, and whereas M&amp;J has offered to extend the contract for fiscal year 2022 at 2% increase, and fiscal years 2023, here's the error, I think.
There's the error.
2020. What should it be, Charles?
Is it through?
Yes.
I, I, you lost me a little bit. I gotta get my, Stephanie, did you follow that? Is it 2026?
26, 26.
When does it end, basically?
It's 26.
Let me reread that, okay? Whereas M&amp;J has offered to extend the contract for fiscal year 2022 at 2% increase, and fiscal years 2023 through 2026 at a 2.9% increase each year. And whereas M&amp;J will keep their normal bus replacement program. Is there anything else in there that you think we should add? Stephanie or Charles? All it says is the normal bus replacement program. Is there anything in terms of training or something else that you mentioned, or no?
That will all be in the contract?
Yeah.
That'll be in the contract.
Untitled language.
Okay, but we, we have in our resolution that there must be the normal bus replacement program. Now, therefore, be it resolved that upon the request of the Board of Education, so this is not just Charles and Stephanie, this is the full Board of Education, and in the best interest of the town, in accordance with Section 1208, Section 7 of the Town Charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby waives the bid requirements as it pertains to the school bus transportation contract and accept the five-year extension from 2021, 2022 to 2025, 2026. Do you move that resolution, Mike Hernandez?
Yes, I do.
I'll second that.
Second it by Lou. Okay, I want to open it up for further discussion.
Yeah, this is Ralph. I'd like to make it just a quick comment.
Okay, Ralph.
I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I support, you know, especially after hearing that, what was done in terms of analysis. And I just want to say, I really appreciate that type of analysis because ultimately, we're in tight monetary times, and that's the due diligence that helps us feel more comfortable that we're doing the right thing. So I certainly appreciate the effort, Stephanie and Charles, that you and your staff put in in trying to take a look at this.
Thank you, Ralph. Just put Tom in there too. Tom was being very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rick?
Yeah, I, I second what Ralph said, but being a numbers guy, I do have to ask this question. I'm just curious how they came up with the percentage increases where you, you went 2% for one year, and then you went 2.9 for the subsequent four years. What was, you know, is that just something the bus company feels they need to have? Or how did, how did you come up with that, or agree to that, the, the percentage of increases?
Stephanie, do you want to talk about one, or would you, would you like me to take a stab at it?
Well, obviously, they always come in higher, so you want to go meet at a negotiating place, and you kind of want to look at, we looked at the overall average of the five years. And we said we wanted to be very similar to where we were at for this five-year contract. So I know I wasn't here when it first came, but I believe you guys had a 0% the first year, and then 2.9, 2.9, 2.8, 2.8, 2.9. So we wanted to be close to the five-year average, and we asked them if they could help us out, you know, what could they do for us in the first year. So that's why the first year was lower. And then to get the, you know, to get to the average of where we wanted to be, that was kind of the level that, where they had to go to and where they could survive off of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Rick.
No, I'm, I'm good. Go ahead, Lou.
So just, and Dr. Britton and Stephanie, I have worked with M&amp;J before too. And one of the things that I like with M&amp;J is that when I was working with them, they were bringing students through a choice program from Hartford, and they had a deal with students in Rocky Hill and in Cromwell. And there happened to be two schools. One was Edna Stevens Elementary School and was, was called Myrtle Stevens Elementary School. And just to make things harder on these bus drivers, is that they had to be able to make sure that these kids went to the Rocky Hill and, uh, Myrtle Stevens, and these kids went to the Edna Stevens. And every day, they did. Even though some of the kids wanted to get off in Rocky Hill and not go to Cromwell, it worked. But the other thing I wanted to mention, and I mentioned the other night, is that I think the bus drivers we've had for all these years, there's a continuity that they know the kids, they know the streets, they know the stops. They know how to get around things if, let's say, a tree is down. So there's a lot of good things with staying with a company beyond the, the increase or the, the rate increase that you've negotiated. So I'm, I'm supportive of this event.
Thank you, Lou. Any other, any other comments or questions, discussion? If there is.
No, I was gonna say, I was gonna say very similarly, right? It's, I think it's, it's good that we're gonna be able to retain the same bus drivers in doing this. I also had a very good conversation with Dr. Britton about this and the work. It's good to see all the due diligence that went into it. So it's, I think it's a, you know, again, it's not great, but it's certainly, having been on the board when we faced some other challenges with, with some cost increases, it's better than some of the options we could have gotten. So I'm, I'm supporting it.
Okay. I want to thank you, Stephanie, and thank you, Charles, for coming tonight, as well as our members of the Board of Education who are here at, at least to listen and to comment if we needed them. So thank you all. I'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item we have is number 11, is a report from the Clean Energy Task Force regarding the Milltown Power Plant. And I've asked the chairman of our committee to speak tonight, Mr. Andy Bauer, and our liaison, Lou Pairs, is going to also comment. But we'll start with you. Andy?
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. Yeah, it's been an interesting couple of weeks with the, the NRG question. So first, let me just start off by sharing some news, which maybe you've heard, probably not, though. NRG, the power plant across the river, as you know, had the proposal to upgrade their turbine, which would be good if you're looking at just the emissions per kilowatt hour. That would have been fine. But the problem was it would, they would want to run that, you know, exponentially more. you know, exponentially more, which would create on the whole more pollution. And, you know, the way the wind blows, it would come across us and East Hampton and everybody east of the river. So NRG was looking to, they threw their hat in the ring for what's known as the forward capacity market. And that's an ISO New England, the folks who control the power grid. That's, that's a mechanism for like, to put it bluntly, for, for getting a long-term contract and making lots of money. You know, no prejudice there. That's how power is done. They were hoping to do that. They did not clear that auction, so they were not able to enter into a long-term contract. Since that time, NRG has announced that they're selling multiple natural gas assets, including the plant across the river. There are buyers interested. So a bunch of questions about what Middletown's going to do with their tax abatement kind of became, you know, moot, right? And I, I think at the meeting, at our, at the Board of Selectmen meeting two weeks ago, I mentioned something which is kind of coming back to me, which is, had we a chance to do something different, knowing what we know now about energy production and emissions? If we were going to design a system now, it's like you snap your fingers and you, and, and every single power plant disappears, but you have all those resources available to then design a new, better power plant system, a better energy system, what would you do? Well, you know, we, we should continue with our resolution to the Middletown Common Council. And we should say to them, you know, we still want renewable energy. It's still a very wise thing to have renewable energy paired with energy storage. By now, everybody's aware of what happened in Texas. And not only was it, you know, devastating weather conditions, you can't fault them for that. You can fault them a lot for how they set up their grid and their lack of emergency measures. But setting that aside, thinking ahead, you know, we need smaller, better, faster, stronger electrical grids. We, we need to be able to generate electricity. And when we generate excess electricity, we need to capture it and to store it. And we should have been doing that, you know, for a long time. But, you know, kind of like the, the old question, when's, when's the, the second best time to plant a tree? Well, now. What was the best time? 20 years ago. So we should move forward with that type of mentality towards our energy system. And that's why I would encourage folks to, to, to vote in favor and support the resolution to the Middletown Common Council opposing the turbine upgrade. So Susan, do you want to pause there, questions such that I can answer?
What I, what I'd like to do with the permission of the Board is read the resolution so that you know what is in this. And, and then you can think about changes or acknowledge that it's fine the way it is. So whereas the energy plant and electrical utility company located at 1866 River Road in Middletown, Connecticut has proposed to install a new 375-megawatt combustion turbine generator. And whereas, due to the longer anticipated runtime, the proposed new turbine, according to State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, will result in a 6.2-fold increase in carbon dioxide emissions. And that is from 170,000 tons to 1,56,505 tons per year. An eightfold increase in emissions of particulate matter from 11 tons to 87 tons per year. And continued substantial emissions of nitrogen oxides, 125 tons per year. And whereas the town of Portland is in the path of any emissions that come from the plant. And whereas Northern Middlesex County suffers from an air inversion that increases the time said emissions will impact Portland residents. And whereas the natural gas used in this plant will most likely come from frack sources. And whereas natural gas pipelines are known to leak methane, a greenhouse gas exponentially more potent than carbon dioxide. And whereas this project is in direct conflict with the State of Connecticut Statutory Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Goal of 45% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. And the governor's zero-carbon target of decarbonizing the electricity generation system 100% by 2040. And whereas Connecticut already produces 26% more electricity than it consumes, making this project unnecessary for our county or state. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Portland seeks to make known to our Middletown neighbors our concern over the items stated above and be it further resolved that the town of Portland respectfully requests of the Common Council of Middletown to negotiate with NRG the use of its resources to instead invest in a project that develops renewable energy sources. And if possible, an accompanying energy storage facility. Now in light of the information, Andy, that you provided, is there anything in that end to negotiate with NRC? Is that still appropriate to put that there?
I think so, because NRG will retain ownership of the plant until December of this year. I, I'm going to, I'm going to be, from what I recall, was at a DEEP hearing on this matter. And there was, there was an understanding, my understanding. When I left the Middletown Common Council meeting last week, I thought NRG had agreed to speak with people like John Hall and the Common Council about energy storage from renewable sources in, in place of a turbine proposal. And at the meeting today, NRG was proposing energy storage, storage with a turbine proposal. So I, I'll just say I was pretty clear on what I heard at the Middletown Common Council. I'm not really sure how, how NRG proposals morphed, I'll put it that way, to, to the, to the DEEP meeting today. But I, I have no interest in going into that. I'll just kind of reaffirm that I think we as Portland should make our thoughts known about what we'd like in terms of energy production from across the river, since it does affect us.
Well, I, I think to suggest that there be negotiations to develop renewable energy sources and if possible, an accompanying energy storage facility is appropriate.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's not NRG, it'll be, I think the name of the company is ArcLight. So if ArcLight, coming into this situation, understands Portland's desires, that's a great thing.
Sure. I think we're already on the record as being in support of renewable energy as well.
Yeah, I'd especially like to give a shout out to Lou, who's been to a few meetings and has contacted the Middletown Common Council as an individual. So thanks, Lou, for your, for your support. Much appreciated.
Well, you're, you're very welcome in there. Thank you right back. One of the things, and that, maybe we should move the resolution first and discussion after that?
Yes, if you would like to make that, move the resolution, Lou, as read.
I'd like to move the resolution as stated.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second it by Jim. Discussion, Lou Pairs?
Right, you know, the, one of the things that Andy had said, and I think this is one of the things that we're all going to deal with. We live in Portland, Middletown is going to make the decisions on a lot of these things. I think by us saying something now to Middletown, that gives them an understanding of where we stand. And also I think that, you know, they're regular people just like us and we're neighbors. And so being neighbors, if we had the power plant in Portland, the Middletown people would probably say, hey, Portland, your, your pollution's coming over here. What are you going to do to help us out? In the letter that I sent to the Common Council, basically talked about pollution, the concern that we have pollution. And Mr. Juliano was very articulate about things that she was dealing with over these years. And I think Elwin mentioned it earlier. You know, these people that live on Middle Haven Road or close to the river, they're receiving more of the particulate than anybody else or the NOCs and the SOCs and all the different things that you get with the pollution. So I basically said, I wanted them to be aware that we're neighbors, treat us like neighbors. The pollution is a concern. The renewable energy is, is something that we should be doing more of. I, I think that when you talk about a power plant, and we all need electricity. And I'm not saying we're going to get rid of all these fossil fuel plants tomorrow. But if we don't do something about enlarging them, then we're not doing anything forward-thinking to make sure that the renewable energies are being added to the, to the grid. So I, I asked them, or in the letter, I asked NRG if they would consider renewables. And just looking at that power plant down there, and there's a big field right next to the power plant. I'm not sure how many megawatts could be generated with solar, but it would definitely reduce the amount of energy that would be needed by a new turbine or an old turbine. So I'm basically saying, I think that this is a, a step in the right direction. I think it's putting the NRG and the, the Common Council of Middletown on notice that the people in Portland want energy efficiency and they want renewal energy. And we want to do things that are in line with the state and federal standards. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Lou.
You're welcome.
Were there comments from the Selectmen?
I just have a question for Andy or Lou. When I travel like up through Western Massachusetts and Vermont, I see solar panels all over the place, in fields and small fields, big fields. Why don't we seem to have that in Connecticut?
How much time you got, Rick? Well, one thing, I mean, you've, you've already taken action towards that question. Susan, you sent me an email about your communication, I think it was to the Governor, Norm Needleman? I forget it was to who it was from, but it was exactly about lifting the cap on the amount of money that can be put towards, not only just the amount of money, but the amount of megawatts that, of solar and renewables that municipalities can have, that we can have in the state of Connecticut. Right now, it's like ridiculously small. And Massachusetts doesn't have that cap. Vermont doesn't have that cap. I mean, I could go on and on, but I'll, I'll stop right there.
So it's.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's sort of a perennial discussion up at the legislature. You know, people like myself, you know, we argue again and again. It's just like, you look at solar, I mean, is there any town in Connecticut that looks at their solar array and says, gosh, I'd rather, I'd rather not be making an extra 50 grand a year? You know, it just doesn't happen. So it's a power game, Rick, on a number of levels. Okay, there's the power, there's the juice, and then there's the power of controlling the energy. But, okay, I'll, I'll try not to rant anymore.
It's a bigger battle to fight.
Right, but we're making some progress. Sorry, Ralph.
I was going to say is I thought I just saw something go by in the paper, I don't know, last couple of days, where there's potential for the, like, the largest solar farm in, in New England that's going to be north of Hartford.
Right, Windsor, I believe, South Windsor. Yeah, yeah, and that's great news. And that, I, you know, just to try to be upfront, that is half the puzzle. The renewables, you know, we have to go, you know, there's a number of reasons to go in the direction of renewables. And those of us in renewables, you know, when you have solar panels like I do, I mean, you know, I knew before they were going up, they didn't work at night. And so I've been starting to think, well, you know, let's, let's, let's look at battery technology. Let's invest in that. Let's move that along. And it's starting to come along. It's still expensive as all get out. But, you know, if you spend it and spend for it and you have it, you're happy to have done so when you get something like Texas.
Right. Any further comments? I want to thank our Clean Energy Task Force for keeping us surprised doing the research and for having our public comments tonight from Mr. Holland and also from Elwin Guilt. And also last time, Mara Juliano, who gave us a lot of good information.
Yeah.
We appreciate you doing that work on our behalf. I'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And may I just say this was a nice birthday present. Much appreciated.
Happy birthday, Andy.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy birthday.
I didn't want to embarrass you and say it, but you said it yourself.
Ralph, you're a trooper. I'm going to go have some cake. Thanks. Have a good night.
All right, good night. Good night.
Night.
The next few items had been sent to the Selectmen previously. And the first is revisions to the Non-Union Personnel Manual. I know that Joe McQuaid is on the call. Joe is from Canaan Escalera and Michael. And for those who are aware, Joe is our labor attorney. So he helps Michelle and me in terms of human resources in our town and also helps us with all of our labor contracts. And he's here tonight to highlight some of these changes. And if you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them for you. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Susan. Good evening, Board members. The, there are three items on the agenda. The first is the Personnel Manual, which is applicable to the non-union folks in town. And most of the amendments that you will see here originated out of Susan's office. These have to do with the administration of the personnel. And some of these have arisen out of real-life situations and others are anticipatory. So I don't think there is anything earth-shaking in the Personnel Manual in terms of the changes. But if anyone had questions on the changes, please let us know.
I do, Joe.
Sure.
This is pertaining to the longevity increase. I just, I'm questioning like, is this been an issue with the non-using, non-union employees? That like they feel the need that they need the extra money? Because I feel like if you're giving them an extra hundred dollars, we're not getting anything out of it. I don't even know what longevity bonuses are for. I don't, I don't get it. I mean, this is a personal opinion. To be honest with you, I was reading it and I, I was almost debating whether or not we should fade it out, grandfather to people that are 10 years or longer, and get rid of it. So I feel like that money could go to another line item that's probably more important. Like I know we're starting to deal with like racial equality and diversity training. I mean, that could be a line I don't know we could use that money for and start getting municipality, police, fire educators trained with that kind of money. I don't, I just don't feel like we're getting anything out of giving them money, extra money like that. So, I mean, please ask or just tell me what you think. Maybe I'm missing something.
Sure, no, I, I, Mike, I think you bring up some legitimate points. And that is a, a decision that falls within your purview. But the longevity payments have been in this Personnel Manual for many decades. They were there before Susan came on board. And generally, what we want to do is to make sure that the non-union employees are not compensated in a manner that is less than or different from the union members. manner that is less than or different from the union members. And I think that's really the reason that longevity payments are in this. You know, you may legitimately say that just because they've been in there for a long time doesn't mean they make sense to me. But I think that if we eliminate those at this point in time, there is always the danger that makes people unhappy, and, you know, it shows that the union people are getting more than the non-union people. So that's a very frank reason for why it's in there, and why it's increased typically in a union negotiation. Sometimes when you're getting down to brass tacks, this longevity payment is what settles the union contract. So we don't want the non-union people to fall too far behind in that regard. But that being said, you have a legitimate point, and certainly can debate that.
All right, thank you. And then the only other one I have is like, what was the sick time? If you're gonna move the increments down to 15 minutes, what was it before?
It was undefined. So I think from an administrative standpoint, having some minimum amount of time is important, and this was something that Michelle was comfortable administering. So I wasn't gonna say, you know, my druthers might be different, but if she can administer it, then that's fine.
All right, I just, 15 minutes seems awfully minute in a scope of things. Like, I don't know why we have to go to fractions, we just can't keep it at an hour. Because the only time I could see 15 minutes coming in play is at the end of a workday. Because you can't use the 15 minutes at the beginning, because if you come in sick, you shouldn't be at work at all. If you go in after lunch, you can still use an hour.
Now, these, Mike, I think would be more for appointments. If there is a doctor's appointment, or there's a need for a treatment of some type, that may not mean the person has a communicable disease. So if you are out on sick leave, it's not always because of a communicable disease. It could be that you need to have an appointment, or you need to go to your PT, or you need to go down the street to your chiropractor. So to not have it defined is not good. So we need to have it defined. Can it be longer than 15 minutes? It could be. We could do half an hour, which is not unreasonable in our town. If someone wanted to leave work and go down the street for a treatment or for an appointment with a medical provider, they could be at within a half an hour. So I think that we don't want to say five minutes or something of that nature.
That's what I'm saying, what's to stop you to say three minutes or something? Like, I just thought a nice round number, 15 minutes, it seems so. You just go to your department ahead and say, hey, I'm cutting out 15 minutes early today.
Sure.
And they're not gonna use their sick time for 15. Well, that's all, it's all minute, but I just didn't understand the reason for 15 minutes.
I mean, I think, you know, 30 minutes is a more reasonable number, but that's something the selectmen can talk about.
Okay, those are my two.
Thank you. How did the other selectmen feel about those items? Any comment?
Susan, it's Lou again. I think that, you know, when you have a situation where someone leaves, you know, 15 minutes or a half an hour early to go to an appointment, those are the things that benefit the town later, because that person will most likely say, okay, I didn't lose a whole hour of salary. And, you know, you need somebody to work an extra half hours or an hour sometime, or on a weekend to do something and pick up something. That language helps that person to say, okay, the administrator is being fair with me, I'll be fair with the administrator. So I think it's one hand washes the other, and sometimes that works out.
Yeah, I think I'll second that, in that I don't mind the 15-minute increments, because, and one of the things it allows is a 45-minute window. It's not, you know, it's not always just gonna be 15, it could be a 45-minute window, or... So I go really more to the fact, how difficult is it to administer? And is it really, is it, if Michelle, who I know administers a lot of this, is comfortable with it, then, you know, I don't really see a problem with it. I feel the same way about the payments, the longevity payments. I know that we have a lot of staff that end up working a lot of hours, extra hours, and things of that nature, especially with nighttime meetings and things that they have to attend. Keeping them on par with the, especially where it's been traditionally done and done for a very long time, keeping them on par with the union folks, I think is, I think probably is proper. It is a vestige, you know, we've had other things that have changed in the last several years, like moving them to high-deductible health plans, and other places where compensation and things have changed. So I don't, you know, it's not that we can't change it, but, you know, it's something that's in place. I'm comfortable with it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would, I'll just make a comment as well. I know that having someone that works for the state, we always have these discussions about longevity payments, and I don't necessarily see the purpose of them as well. But I think if you, you'd have to, if you were eliminating it from the union, I could, like, you have to eliminate in both places. I understand they're trying to be fair. But I think if you're having that type of a benefit, you'd have to eliminate it from union and non-union in order to be fair. So if you eliminate it here, you're still leaving. And I'm sure there must be something similar in the union contract, that they get some sort of a longevity benefit. So if you, you can't eliminate, it's either both or neither, you know? That's how I look at it. Just my thought.
Thank you. I just want to point out, yeah, before that, Rick, I just want to point out that there's only two elected full-time positions, that's mine, the first selectwoman and the town clerk. We do not get any longevity payments. Even though I have worked for 17 years, I don't get them. And I don't get any payouts for sick, I don't get any payouts for vacation, and neither does the town clerk. So in case there was any question on that, I wanted to make that clear. Rick?
Well, that doesn't seem fair. I kind of agree with Ralph on the longevity. And I guess if, I would ask, if it's in there because of the unionized longevity, are your percentages of increase done fairly? Because the 10 through 14 year is getting a 40% increase, the 15 through 19 year is getting a 29% increase, and the 20-year and up is getting only a 23% increase. How'd you come up with the increases? And is, are the percentages in keeping with what's in the union contract? Or did somebody just, was it just easy to say, oh, it's a hundred dollars across the board, is what it looks like happened here?
These were taken from, I believe, the MEUI contract, Joe?
I believe so. And Rick, to your point, someone long ago decided 100 bucks was gonna be the difference. That's the way it stayed. If you want to apply a more scientific approach to it, that's fine. It's, I never want to stand in the way of progress. I'm just telling you, this is the way it's been done. That's not always a legitimate reason for doing anything, but that's the reason that these percentages were put forward.
The one thing that has been eliminated over the years for the non-union employees is they don't have any steps. And a step is an increment that's given typically in January for union employees for a period of time. Sometimes it's six years from the time they start, sometimes it's more, sometimes it's given, sometimes it isn't, depending on the contract and how it's negotiated. The non-union employees have been getting very close, and in some cases, the individuals that they may be supervising, because we haven't as a board, and this goes before many of your time, has not given the non-union the same increments that some of the union individuals get. You begin to see the supervisors making less per hour than some of the people they're supervising. Now, again, in terms of elected positions, the first selectman salary, this salary, there's many administrators that make more than the first select. So it doesn't always follow it, but when it comes to some of our supervisors providing direct supervision, they're not in an elected position. You will see, when we talk in the budget season, of some adjustments that I am suggesting. Because in a review, a careful review of salaries, it is important that our valued employees be compensated appropriately, and that they be shown and told of the value that they have been performing. I can say, as their supervisor, our administrators to a person are doing excellent work in providing good supervision, direction, and management of our town. And I'm talking about those individuals that are serving in the positions of planner, development planner, zoning enforcement, building official, public works, finance director, library director, youth services administrator, senior center administrator, and others. So these folks run our programs. They supervise, and they maintain the objectives and achieve the goals that we set for them, and they're doing a fine job. So in terms of review of the Personnel Manual, I think the last time this was reviewed, Joe, was 2014.
That's about right.
So I felt it was time to take a look at this again. And I also took a look at some of the salary scales. So that's why you're seeing these. It's not done every year, but I think it is important that we maintain the excellent staff that we have in running our town. Any further questions on these items? I don't know if you're ready to approve these tonight. I'll leave that to you.
I'm comfortable.
Yeah, we can approve it tonight.
Yeah, I'm fine, too.
Then I would need a motion to approve as presented the revisions to the non-union Personnel Manual, or as the current Personnel Manual for non-union employees has not been updated for several years, with the last revision being approved on July 23, 2014. And whereas the proposed revisions are keeping in line with town policies and practices that govern personnel, and whereas the following sections have been amended, Section 2.0 Employment, Section 2.4 Employee Training, A, C, and D, Section 8.0 Disciplinary Action, 8.5 Causes for Discipline, Section 9.0 Conduct of Employee, Section 9.6 Longevity, Section 11.0 Fringe Benefits Time Off, Section 11.8 Personal Leave, Section 11.9 Sick Leave. Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed revisions to the non-union Personnel Manual be and should be, are hereby approved, not is.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the revision to the non-union Personnel Manual dated March 3, 2021, as presented.
I'll second it.
Hernandez?
Yep.
Further discussion? I want to thank you for your comments. I think they were very well stated, and I think important for our discussion. And I think it gives us all time to contemplate the work that's being done by our employees. In tonight's case, it happens to be the non-union. Another night, it'll be our union employees. And again, particularly, this last year, I must say, as your first selectman, our employees have stepped up to the plate so many times in terms of this pandemic, and in terms of the storms, and some of the energy outages, and other emergencies. They're doing a very good job, and I'm very proud of each and every one of them. So I'll call for the question. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next items that we have, and Joe's gonna walk us through, are the sexual harassment prevention policy updates to our policy, as well as the zero tolerance on workplace violence policy. And those were shared with the selectmen, but Joe, if you could just highlight for us, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, let's start with the sexual harassment prevention policy. That policy had been part and parcel of what we called harassment and discrimination policy. But in 2019, the legislature passed some significant legislation in the area of sexual harassment. And it's become time that we update this policy and be able to say that the sexual harassment prevention policy is separate and apart from the harassment and discrimination policy. The policy itself largely tracks what we have had in place for a number of years, but expands on it and provides a little more guidance on what is required under the statute for a legitimate sexual harassment policy. So there may be some things in here that don't seem intuitive or that are different than they were in the past. For instance, we are required to put in a policy that an employee may complain to certain governmental agencies, and we're required to say what the remedies are if someone files a complaint of sexual harassment. Also, in the legislation, there was a new provision that if there is an incident of sexual harassment, and the remedy, the immediate remedy, is to separate the complaining party from the complained-about party, now we have to have in writing the complaining party's consent to that change in employment. So sometimes people would be moved from one department to another, at least temporarily, or they'd be put on different shifts or what have you. Now that has to be in writing, that's right out of the statute. One of the things that the new law also did is it mandates training on sexual harassment for everyone, all the employees. So in the past, it was just the supervisors who underwent sexual harassment training. Now it's everyone. And so that is something that has to be done after October 1, 2018. So if people have had sexual harassment training, but it was before October 1, 2018, now they have to get that after October 1, 2018. And really, one of the reasons that I wanted to talk to you about this is that when we did this in 2014, we talked about a safety valve. So that if, for instance, the, there was a complaint of sexual harassment against the first selectman, then we have to have an outlet so that the complaining party can go to someone other than the first selectman in order to make that complaint. And all complaints of sexual harassment, written or oral, need to be taken seriously, investigated, and any necessary action taken. So what we did back in 2014 is made all of you on the Board of Selectmen that safety valve, so to speak. So if there was an employee who complained about the first selectman, for instance, they could come directly to you. Now, here we are in 2021. Every employee needs to be trained on sexual harassment. They may come to you, I don't, I'm not aware of any complaints that were filed, you know, in the past seven years or so, against the first selectman. But it's possible that they come to you now. And so the question is, are you comfortable taking on that role? Secondly, have you had sexual harassment training at, you know, October 1, 2018, going forward? And if you're not comfortable with this workaround, then we have to go back to the drawing board and figure out how we want complaints handled in the future. and figure out how we want complaints handled in the future. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions or discussion.
Joe, wouldn't, like, if there was sexual harassment claim against the first selectman or woman, what about our ethics commission? Wouldn't they be a logical sort of unbiased board to hear that kind of complaint or handle that? I don't know, I'm just asking. I'm not, just.
Rick, I don't think so. Because what is going to be required is very rapid action. And the ethics commission doesn't have a lot of powers. And those powers, because they're an unelected board, yeah, or commission are necessarily limited. So we want someone who can, one, take immediate action if it's required and two, conduct the investigation. So if a complaint came in, the people with the power to take immediate action would be you. I can't think of anyone else unless we set up a more elaborate scheme where there was an ombuds person or something along those lines that could, could take the necessary action.
Joe, as far as the, I know in the schools, they have to have a sexual harassment compliance officer. And usually the superintendent designates someone. And that person's usually a central office administrator. If that central office administrator was the one who was doing the sexual harassing, then the superintendent and the board of that, I guess, would probably intervene. In the case of the board of, well, in the case of the town, who is the, I don't know, the compliance officer for sexual harassment? Is it the first selectman?
It would fall in the first selectwoman's office, yeah. And typically, Lou, you know, we go, when they designate someone, it's, it's often the HR professional. Who is that person? We don't, we don't have that, the same kind of person in town hall right now.
Okay, so I don't know. I guess if we are the board of selectmen and Susan was, it was a case of sexual harassment that she was involved in, then I would assume that the board of selectmen would be the ones who would follow up on that with legal counsel.
That would be my, you know, my advice would be the first call you make would be for legal counsel.
I like that.
That seems rational to me.
So I have a question along that line. So I'm perfectly comfortable with the fact that we would think the board of selectmen would get engaged in this if necessary. Is this something that, you know, obviously we have certain things that we do that have to be, I would assume this would have to be held outside the, you know, the regular meeting and have to be in some special session. We're not going to be, this, because it goes around about an employee issue, right? It's the same thing. Just like union contract discussion, stuff like negotiate. Is another thing that has to do with that? So we would do it in executive session, right?
Um, we would have to cross that bridge when we came to it. But I think that the policy talks about you can go to any member of the board of selectmen. And the reason I say that the first call should be to legal counsel is that we don't want, we want to be able to maintain confidentiality to the extent that we can. So I wouldn't want it in the first instance going to the rest of the board that this complaint came in, because then you're going to have a meeting and we have FOI problems.
So you're saying if a selectman gets a complaint about sexual harassment concerning the first selectman, then that individual selectman contacts somebody like you, right? Before doing anything else?
That, that is the advice, yes, absolutely. Now, if someone came to the board of selectmen at an open meeting and made a complaint, well, you know, the FOI laws apply and really confidentiality has been largely forfeited by the act of saying this in open sessions. That may be a different situation. But one can imagine a scenario in which a department head is accused of sexual harassment and the complaint comes in that the, the department head and the first selectman were working hand in glove and it's really the, against both people. That, you know, under this policy, they can come to you, Rick, for instance. And you would want to keep it confidential in the first instance until we had legal counsel and we figured out what we were going to do with it.
So I have another scenario. So we just spent all this time making Susan feel very uncomfortable. So what the situation is, if Susan is sexually harassed, it's kind of difficult for her to go through the process of kind of administrating through this situation if she's the one that really is saying she needs to complain about something that occurred with one of her direct or indirect reports or whatever. So how does that?
In other words, if she's the victim, right?
Right. If she, if the first selectman is the victim, then I would imagine that the first selectman would contact legal counsel and they'd go forward from there. At the same time, the first selectman has the power and can take certain actions. It wouldn't make sense if the first selectman were involved as the victim for the first selectman to do so in accordance with just our ethical obligations and the like. Yeah, I think in that instance, the first selectman would, who has the power to contact outside counsel, would, would probably do that first. But the policy would allow the first selectman in that instance to go to the board and say, this is happening, I want you to move forward with it.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to talk about, do you want to take each policy in turn? So you would have to approve the changes that are suggested in the document that you received tonight.
So on this sexual harassment, this harassment and discrimination policy, I printed it out. It looks like you made quite a few changes here.
Well, yeah, it's really an expansion of what the policy was. Put in slightly different language, language that is perhaps more contemporary and consistent with what the statute and the general discussion has been.
It must have been a short document.
Yes, it's significantly longer. The revisions are more, more than double what was originally there.
Exactly, yeah. You know, here in Portland, for as long as I've been involved, we kind of like short, to the point statements or things of that nature. And I agree with that. But given the legislature's action, the message is crystal clear. We're not fooling around. And I think in order to protect ourselves, we need to have a sexual harassment policy in place that goes through and explains a little bit more than what we did before.
So with all that said, I'd like to just make a motion that we accept the revisions of the sexual harassment prevention policy as stated, which also includes the legislation and the statute revisions.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph Sampaño. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is zero tolerance on policy on workplace violence. Joe?
Yes, I thought that this was an appropriate time to look at the zero tolerance policy. I think that it's no secret that we have had a lot of discord in our country in, in the recent decade. And frankly, with COVID, I found that everybody's, is a little tense. You find that everywhere. So these are, I think, common sense revisions, a little more explanation. And most particularly, I wanted to add something about, what do you do if you're confronted with someone? And we don't want our employees who are not trained in such matters trying to intervene. You know, it's, you try and, don't engage with someone who is exhibiting violent tendencies, call the professionals. I thought that was the most important addition to the policy.
I agree.
I mean, I think it's common sense to do that. And I think that since it's written there and people can read it and people can be aware of it, it really speaks to the issue so that you don't take the law in your own hands. And so, well, I'll wait till everybody else has the time to speak.
Others? No comments? These policies, once they are adopted, they are shared with the employees. And typically, what we do is annually review them and at least send out to each employee that these policies do exist and they may need to refer to them. There are many policies that we have, but these two in particular, I think, are in need of revisions. And I thank you, Joe, for helping us and enlightening us as to how these need to be improved. It's very helpful.
My pleasure.
So the motion was made and seconded, is that, or not yet?
This one is not, I'll make, I don't think it's been made yet. But I'll make a motion to approve the zero tolerance policy on workplace violence as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Rick. Okay, further discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you again, Joe. It's good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Yeah, nice to see you, Joe.
Good night, Joe.
Good night.
The next item, number 15, is appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments tonight?
Not tonight.
Thank you.
No.
Refunds for excess payments.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we refund the amount of $284.43 to Nissan Infinity LT.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
Make a motion that we refund the amount of $175.24 to Acar Leasing LTD.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
And I make a motion that we refund the amount of $258.65 to Mark D. Sawyer.
I'll make a, I'll second that.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Status reports. Are there any status reports tonight?
Yeah, I have one, just an update on the airline trail. Susan and I met with Riz, Rizzo, and we talked more about phase two, where the trail could move from where it is now near the YMCA property toward the newly to be finished soon, Jerry Queen. We've had some discussions with the owners of the properties and we're in the process of moving forward with, with that project. Hopefully we'll be able to move forward in phase two. Obviously, we need to talk more about the funding, which would come most likely from DEEP. And we'll see how that goes. But that's an application process. And as far as a estimate of when phase two could be done, it all depends on when DEEP gives us funding. They may be able to give us funding in 2022. But sometimes you don't get it the first year, you have to wait till 2023. So hopefully, that section of the trail could be done before 2024.
Thank you, Lou.
Lou, is, so you have all the property owners on board for that?
We have a verbal commitment from all the owners right now. And we're in the process of sending out, Susan has sent out a letter to them requesting written approval. And also the written approval would be tied to the site plan that Jacobson put together. Obviously, if any of the owners are not, do not like that draft, it can be adjusted.
Okay. Do you, do you know if, not that it, it's not our section of the trail, but do you know if East Hampton's proceeding with that section kind of through the ravine there?
Yeah, as far as we've been told is that the engineer, anchor engineering from East Hampton, who's also, one of their representatives is a consultant for our airline trail in Portland, he gives us a report and update every month. He has said for the last several months that EverSource is in the process of moving the poles. But once the poles are moved, there would probably have to be some type of either piping for drainage or a, maybe a boardwalk that would go over the water that drains in that area. So the poles haven't been moved yet, but EverSource did say that they would move them. So once they move those, DEEP is very, very much committed to put in a boardwalk. And they, I'm guessing that would be a high priority for them.
Okay.
As it is for us.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to update you. There was a question recently about the water source grant that we had received, the $250,000 from the State Department of Public Health. We do have a meeting scheduled, I do, with the Department of Public Health tomorrow. So at our next meeting, I should have at least some update for you on our procedure in that regard. Other status reports?
I'll, I quick, a couple of quick ones. One is parking rec meets next week. So I don't have anything to update, right, the next meeting probably. The other thing would be the library boards met, I think, since we've met. And probably one of the more significant conversations that we had in that meeting or they had in a meeting was with regards the, with the idea of waiving fees going forward. This has become something that's been very popular around many of the towns in the area. It seems to encourage, seems to encourage more usage of the library. And it's not really a major impact with regards to, the fines are less and less that are coming in. So I would expect that in our conversation with the library when we go through the budget process. That may be, may be brought up. But I figured I'd just give everyone a heads up on that.
We do need, I think, Ralph, to look at the history of those dollars. While they may not be of a triple or, you know, they're not hundreds of thousands of dollars, there, there is some contribution there. And I think we should look at it at a minimum. So if, if, I think that our library director had to leave the meeting. But I think if she could get us that information, that is important. Sources of revenue are very important to us. I get the concept. But bottom line is, we need revenue. And every revenue is important to be accounted for. So we need to account for it and take a look at it.
Yeah, but, and believe me, I did obviously emphasize that when we talked about it, saying that, you know, I know from Tom's standpoint, I know how, because I, we've, I think. you know, I know from Tom's standpoint, I know how, because I think we briefly talked about it a year or two ago before. And, and just saying that, you know, if that's a number he accounts for, he has a number, whatever it is, and he has an expectation that that's what's going to be on the revenue side and it corresponds to something that's on the expense side and they balance out is the goal here typically. So so that would have to be accounted for as well. So I did, I did reference that. They're aware.
Yeah, I look forward to the discussion. We'll, we'll discuss it more. Thank you. Other status reports?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about the school Board of Ed meeting last night. They, Kate Lawson gave a good update with some pride that they had a new offering. It was for computer science programming. And basically a new AP offering. And eight students took the test, all of them passed it. And they were recognized nationally by the fact that they, the school actually, it was, it was an even split. It was one of those classes that I think you traditionally have seen more men than women, but we had an even split between, you know, young women and young men that were in it. So there was some pride taken there. As I noted earlier, they talked about some of the statistics. It's nice to see that the latest statistics that Portland is actually faring pretty well in terms of our COVID rate. Obviously, we still have work to do, but both within the district and within Middlesex County, we're in the lower region. 18.7% have at least received at least one shot. I thought that was a good statistic, given how we're moving forward with that, and especially with some of the efforts that's being done by a number of folks in the, in the community to help people get vaccinated. Some good news, and Dr. Britton had alluded to this, that one of the challenges we've had is when teachers have had gotten exposed or infected and had to quarantine, is it's tough to get substitutes. The good news is that with the changes in eligibility, all folks associated with education are now eligible for vaccinations. And they've actually got both first and second shot clinics already scheduled. They're including in this to make sure everyone's protected. It's available to, obviously, you know, to teachers, to administrators, custodians, food service, folks working the bus. Basically, it's all faculty and staff associated with, with education. So that's a, that's a positive development. That's something that I think that the, they scheduled it, I think, smartly on Fridays. So they're, if, you know, they're thinking was, especially with the second shot, if some teachers aren't feeling, or if anybody who's taking a shot isn't feeling well, they have the weekend to recover. Budget wise, the relief that was talked about, the Board of Ed had received, you know, $312,000 in additional funding. There was some of that was accounted for and that did leave a sum, I believe the number that was about $237,000 that they're going to be able to use to help, basically going into next year, both targeting some additional programming to help kids get, basically get caught up or basically get some, kind of get ramped up based on some of the impacts of some of the difficulties that they've gone through for the last year. So with COVID, so that was very positive to see. And Eric Martin, he gave some, some information. Probably the interesting part of that is we, at this point, have 186 kids that are still still taking advantage of the PVLA, which is the Portland Virtual Learning Academy, which means I think roughly about one in six students is still availing themselves of that, that opportunity. And their, the, their Committee on Equity and Inclusion has at least met at the the steering committee in terms of setting it up has met. They ended up with 50 applicants that were submitted applications for 25 positions. So they've made those selections and they're going to be getting to work. And they are talking about doing again some work with an enhanced summer program that they're, that they're looking to put together. So a lot of good news coming out of the, out of the Board of Ed. One other part that was interesting is that they are looking at aligning both the Portland Middle School and Portland High School schedules. And I think anyone who has had kids that have gone through the system, remember the, you know, what the days look like when they've got seven, eight periods in one day that they're trying to fit in. This is going to be more of an A B type schedule where they'll have no more than five classes in a day as a general rule. But the class size, the class timeframes will go from 42 minutes up to an hour. Basically, they're finding that, and the belief is that that's going to give the kids an advantage in terms of, they'll still get the appropriate number of minutes per class, but they will not spend so much time changing classes, et cetera. So try to optimize that, that learning a little bit. So it was a good meeting. They had a very good meeting last night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other reports? We'll move to public comment. Nick, do you see any public comment?
No, there's nothing right now.
All right, then we will move on to a general informal discussion from the Selectmen. Is there any questions or discussion? I don't have anything on the follow up items, other than in the next meeting, I will give you some information on the town charter process as I had indicated last time. So we'll put that on.
Excuse me, I have a question about that. I know I was the one that brought it up, but I said, I'd be good if we had an idea of what timeframe we're talking about, we're trying to go through that. Did we really settle on a timeframe? I know you said you're going to present the steps, but do we have any sense of timeframe when we want to make sure we've all reviewed it for comments?
Well, I had hoped you would review it for the next meeting, which I believe is 17 of March. But I'll also present to you information on the process so that you can have an idea of how it works. And then it's really up to the Selectmen if they, any interest in reviewing the charter. It's not unlike the personnel manual. There's going to be leftover things that really are, may be what they call vestiges that need to be updated. And then there may be some other substantive things that you think should be looked at. It's every five years, we look at this. And I think it's important periodically for you to review it and determine if you want to take any further action. There's no necessarily a time limit on that.
No, I'm just saying from the standpoint, if we're going to have a substantive discussion on it, I just prefer to come prepared for when we're going to put the effort.
Well, we had indicated that it would be our third meeting in March.
That's what I thought, so I just.
That's what I recall. Anyone recall anything different?
No, that's what I had.
All right, if there's nothing else, I.
Can we, Susan, can we, can we print that charter off from the town website? How do we get it?
What I'll do to make things a little easier for the Selectmen, while the charter is available on the website, I'll have Michelle send you a copy so that you will have it. And if you wish, and I know all of you except maybe one person still needs to pick up his budget. If you don't want to be copying all these things off your home computers, give Michelle either a contact, either an email or a telephone. We'll make these available for you. If you can simply come to Town Hall, they'll be available right at the back door if you want to come and pick them up. Or if you're on a weekend, you do have access to the Town Hall as Selectmen and you can go to your mailboxes, which is outside the first Selectmen's office. So just feel free. I know there's a lot of copying of a charter. There's going to be quite a few pages. Not tremendous, but if you want to have those done for you, we're happy to do that.
Just look in your stack there, Rick. It's going to be a blue covered, we got it, there you go, right there.
We did send that to you previously.
No, I probably, I actually, I may have it.
I think it's filed under C in your library.
Okay. I will say, I tried twice to print the town budget. All 120 something pages and both times I got gibberish. So it was, I was able to pick mine up last night. So I definitely, I'm going to take you up on having Michelle or somebody at the Town Hall print those long documents.
Yeah, yeah. We, we certainly have the equipment and we're happy to do that for you. And it's, it's just so awkward with the pandemic. We don't see you. So ordinarily, we'd be handing these documents to you at our meetings, but it's kind of hard to put them through. All right, are you ready to adjourn? Or would you like any other comments?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Lou. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rick Sharp. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And just for the record, it's 9:52 PM, March 3, 2021. All right, have a good rest of the evening. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody.